I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Perez is absent, I get your ideas?
Here.
And this is me?
Here.
Second thought?
Please ma'am.
And we are here for a little something.
Probably not.
Jesse Duncan?
Counsel, Mayor Reeves, Andrew Dorpley. First, I'd like to say that you all have kind of a late act approach here, it's a lot of fun. I like it from a small town, I miss that. So, obviously, I'm from out of town, probably all picked up on that. What I'm here for is, I own a small business in your community. It's a Texas cab, just an credit access business, we're located in the Fiesta Mercado. The name of our company is Bear Processing, and we operate under the DPA General here in Texas. Our business offers a small lending product that is somewhat different from the industry, and we've been able to expand on that model through different markets, mainly through referral process in our existing customer case. We read the possibility of ordinance here in the city of Socorro in the El Paso Times, and I'm actually all for that. A regulated small lending industry is a positive thing. Brick and mortar offices that are regulated and have solid oversight from local authorities as well as state and federal authorities, I believe is a positive thing. So, with that being said, I'd like to offer myself as an honor of a small business and a small lending cab in your own community as a resource. I'll send you all my name and contact information, and if you have any questions for me regarding the industries, recent changes in the industry, and specifically for our business, our different approach to the small lending operation, I would love to talk to you about that. We have a lot of research and information that may help you as you move forward, consider ordinance, there have been a lot of changes recently. And so anyway, thank you very much for the time, and look forward to speaking with you. Thank you.
You didn't even sign up, it's gonna be sworn in.
Yeah.
Mr. Yigara?
Good afternoon, members of Socorro, we have known each other for a long time, and we, the members of Socorro, what we do is to help others, and we want to help others who need help, because we see very little, we want to help them in the areas of poverty, in the areas of poverty, because we, since we started here, we have been here for a long time, and we have seen a lot of people, 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 and it's up to you all to make them right, and I trust you will do that. Thank you so much for doing the right thing, and continue doing the right thing, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the proclamations. Item number five, proclamation in regard over Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast cancer is second most common diagnosis of cancer for women in the United States and remains second most common cancer death among American women, and whereas chymography is recognized as a single most effective method of detecting breast changes, multiple physical symptoms can be seen or felt. Early detection and improved treatment is believed to has significantly due to the number of deaths suffered by breast cancer, and whereas through Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we remember those living with breast cancer and their family and friends provide them with a lot of support, their courage and determination are inspirational to us all, and whereas we recognize the innovative, life-saving work of doctors, researchers, and other medical professionals, through their efforts to prevent, detect, and treat breast cancer, they are helping make a difference in the lives of our citizens. Our nation leads the world in medical research, and through the dedicated efforts of Americans, we can build a healthier and more hopeful future for our citizens. Until we find a cure for breast cancer, we will continue to fight against this disease. Now therefore be resolved that the oral sitting council do give your back a claim October 2014 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Are there any breast cancer survivors or counseling breast cancer survivors?
Yes, yes.
Sure, sixty-five.
I want to give around the possible files concerning this. Moving on to item number six, proclamation occurring October National Bullying Prevention Month. Whereas more than thirty million emergency kids a year are affected by bullying, and whereas teens in grades six through ten are the most likely to be involved in activities related to bullying, and whereas approximately thirty percent of students in the United States are involved in bullying on a regular basis, either as a victim, bully, or bully, and whereas as civic leaders of cities of Socorro, we can and must use our resources to affect positive change in our communities, and whereas for Bullying Prevention Month in October 2014, Socorro City Council, joint forces with the United States Council of Mayor, Mayors, and the Bullying Project, and the Mayor's Campaign to End Bullying, which builds resolve global communities to come together and improve school climate and create safer schools, and whereas bullying still impacts far too many of our nation's youth, about one or four children in the United States are bullied on a regular basis, and whereas the city of Socorro is committed to continue to raise awareness about the issue of bullying and resolve double their efforts to help eradicate this problem. Now therefore be resolved that Socorro City Council fully supports bullying prevention activities, and be a final resolve that Socorro City Council, through all it can, to call attention to the issue of bullying in schools and work to develop citywide programs to combat the problem and ensure that all students have access to a safe and secure educational environment. Moving on to the presentations. Number seven, recognition of Mr. Torres for his dedicated services to the city of Socorro.
No, Mr. Torres and I have worked very hard in previous years on previous councils, and he's very instrumental in helping the city, guide the city of Socorro in the right direction as far as planning and zoning, and then later on got involved in the civil service commissions, which help our employees in these disagreements that they need to deal with, and he was very instrumental, very helpful in those fields, and I'm glad that we're doing this, and I'm glad to be here.
For those of you who don't, for like Mr. Cox said, was a volunteer for our commission in the city, and he passed away, and we thank him for his service in Socorro over the years, and I'll give to Mr. Cox a class to give to this panel.
Thank you, sir.
It will be appreciated. Okay, moving on to item number eight, presentation by a representative of South of Socorro regarding their horse project. I don't think there are two of us today who know what we did. Will we, will we, Mr. Rodriguez, we're just deleting your turn. Okay, yeah, I understand. Right motion made by Mr. Rodriguez to the item number eight, seconded by Mrs. Rodriguez.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Yes ma'am.
Moving on to item number nine, presentation by Socorro high school seniors regarding community, and to have an address.
Good afternoon, council, we represent the Socorro high school seniors. We wanted to let you all know of a community gift we have in mind, it involves, of course, introducing the city of Socorro, and then, we have spoken to Mayor, and he was thinking of donating books, because Socorro does definitely have a library, so we were thinking of having a book donation, and put them in the real...
Fire.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, we also wanted to, for the seniors sake, we have a budget of two hundred dollars right now, and we plan to buy some trees, of course, plant just a beautiful vacation project here in the city, and have a nice garden, I guess.
Like flowers, or little plants that we can, so we can just be... And...
Yeah, we want to make a more, like, impactful community, and we just wanted to acknowledge that to the council and the city of Socorro.
Because many towns have a lot of schools, they want to clean up the city, but we wanted to go beyond that level and do something, and donate our senior gifts to the community, because we live in Socorro, and we have much pride here.
So, we seek your approval, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any, or anything about, about these, the cars?
Not yet, but if you have any suggestions, we're open.
I would suggest we, with the seniors, and if they're proud, we can always bring care of them.
That's what I'm saying. Actually, our regular supervisor decided their district, and if you all agree together with anything, please, this is an honor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number ten, presentation regarding a report by State Manager, really monthly.
Good afternoon, members of the council, I want to indicate that there are several things that transpired in March of September, and I'll start off indicating we've had a first bid on leave for the Socorro Bridge, which is a little bit east of Passmore, right in Alameda. We did not receive any bids, and we obviously won't put bids out this particular month. We also, we also set up the closing date to purchase the twenty-four acres of property at Berris and Thunder Road, that closing date is October thirtieth, that was set up in September. We've attended a meeting with the TechDoc, Texas Department of Transportation, to go over the ninety-five percent cushion design of Old Waco Tents Road, and a letting date is going to be June first, two thousand sixteen, that'll be the date which they have bids sent out in order to build that particular road. I do want to say that there were approximately eighteen different locations, primarily the fourth district, where the Lower Valley Water did come out and pick up several junk piles and debris, couches, mattresses, in that particular district, and I want to say that that's probably the first time that they've done something like that on a collective basis, and we've got literally maybe three sites, enough in that area, that has like brush, and junk, and three different piles, so we'll work on getting that out on this through this month. I do want to point out that the electronic control panel that turns the well on at the Bulldog Championship Park is broken, we have to still work with a contractor to get a new electronic panel to turn the pump water on in order to put water inside the well, which is ultimately used for irrigation at a good point in time, so we started that process in September, and hopefully we end it by the end of this particular month. The logistics for the educational fair had been set up for November twentieth, primarily due to human resources and the recreational center supervisor, where we would have several educational groups come in, and to literally show our employees what type of courses, what type of programs that they can actually enter into to enhance their skills in terms of their work production or their work knowledge. I do want to say that in September was the first time we cut grass at three oh one place, literally it was two years ago, probably the worst dump site in the city, and now finally we have grass, and I would say that sixty-five percent of the property now has grass on it as opposed to the debris and junk that was on there before, so we had the first grass cutting in September. We also had a meeting with the Lower Valley Water to actually talk about which streets can be redone in the McAdoo subdivision, as well as the logistics for getting sewer extended on Socorro Road to get to Frye or Bean Road, and hopefully that's something that could work out in the next month, that we literally have done, but there is an item on the agenda concerning sewer, and we'll get to that when that item comes out. I do want to report that the backstop has been installed in Moon City Park, which is a major improvement in the park, and very good, very nice, and it really enhances the park, and hopefully we can have some T-ball going next spring inside of the park. I do want to say that the Public Works Department, along with the high school seniors, or the high school R-TC group, literally filled sandbags in the month of September for the city, and we really appreciated that helping and effort that they did. I do want to indicate that you probably already saw, some of the efforts of redoing the roof of this particular building is nearly completed, so we've got at least two more sites to go, but in September they actually started the changing of the roofing for this particular facility. We did have a meeting with the El Paso Irrigation District concerning potentially requiring the city an annual lease amount to deposit stone water inside of the various drains that they have, and the biggest thing that went on in the month of September is to, basically, the budget, the capital budget, and the property taxes being passed, and all the wonderful charges in the same slip, that helped it together for that, dominated September, and obviously the removal of water, and starting catching loopholes, and getting back to the street overlay from the Public Works Department. Those are some of the major things that occurred in the month of September.
Something that was just pointed out to me, Mr. Dorpley, just today, is a matter of fact, the seating right underneath our porch area there, the wood is coming loose, breaking down, I don't know, when they were working on the roof, they might have stepped on it or grew or something, can we see, can we see that, get that air, please, before it falls on somebody or something?
Absolutely, appreciate it.
Right here.
And we also want to thank everybody who called the Chili War Festival in September.
Mr. Douglas? The Chili War Festival, highly successful, I got some scribbled up notes here, it's on here, the Chili War Festival, highly successful, I do want to say that there was some sense of alarm, when we didn't have a lot of chili, or any chili there, but it became an old school party, if you got music and beer, the music was wonderful, and the people were decent, you got to party, and I heard that they partied, waited until after two in the morning.
It's like going to the wine, the slumbers of wine.
Well, that works, that works, the only difference is we had beer and music, and I do, I did hear that we still possibly owe one of the music, that there's about four hundred dollars that play into the week, mornings an hour, and I'll talk to Mr. Rodriguez about getting that, sorry, Mr. Chili War Festival.
Well, I hope you feel better, I know you're under the weather, and I would like to say also a big thanks to all the people that worked very hard for the Chili War Festival, the parts, and the pretty, she partnered, your department, everybody that was involved, Ms. Valente? Where are you, Mr.?
Hide in the back.
Hide in the back. For me, the first year was highly successful, I'm glad that you still will be there, and all you guys worked very, very hard, and also for the law too, and everybody else worked very hard, so thank you everybody.
And we look forward to the event, hopefully next week across the state of America here, October twenty-fourth. Have our ball festival next week here in Rosetta, all of the ten victims, and stuff, do a great job, we'll have lots of house over there, and be ready to see people.
That's what, in November fourth, and this is September three-fourth.
Also, for the first night, national rally?
Okay, you're in November.
That's true. But that was last. It's October fourteenth.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. We have a motion made by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mrs. Rodriguez, to approve the consent agenda. Senator Rodriguez? Do a screen. Aye. Says something about, you know, do something square or affirm, that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of the Civil Service Commission.
Civil Service Commission.
Of the Cities of Socorro Texas.
Cities of Socorro Texas.
And with the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state.
And of the state.
Aye.
Aye.
Says something about, you solve this square.
Solve this square.
Or affirm, that I have not directly.
That I have not directly.
Or indirectly.
Or indirectly.
Paid.
Paid.
Offered.
Offered.
Promised to pay.
Promised to pay.
Contributed.
Contributed.
Or promised to contribute.
Or promised to contribute.
Any money.
Any money.
Or thing of value.
Or thing of value.
Or promise any public or equipment.
Or promise any public.
Or equipment.
Or equipment.
As rewards.
As rewards.
Secure my appointments.
Secure my appointments.
For confirmation thereof.
For confirmation thereof.
Thank you. Aye.
Aye.
Says something about, you solve this square.
Solve this square.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I have not directly.
That I have not directly.
Or indirectly.
Or indirectly.
Paid.
Paid.
Offered.
Offered.
Promised to pay.
Promised to pay.
Contributed.
Contributed.
Or promised to contribute.
Or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or promise any public.
Or promise any public.
Or equipment.
Or equipment.
As rewards, secure my appointments.
As rewards, secure my appointments.
For confirmation thereof.
For confirmation thereof.
Aye.
Aye.
Says something about, you solve this square.
Or affirm.
Or affirm. That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
The Planning and Zoning Commission.
Of the Cities of Socorro Texas.
Cities of Socorro Texas.
And with the best of my ability.
And with the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the states.
And the states. I would like to add, in the last case, I had spoken to him earlier in my term, and I had asked him to think and consider this, because we knew that Mr. Torres was very ill, and would possibly pass on, and he was very anxious to wait, and he was ready to be an alternate in Mr. Torres' assets, and I really thank you for being here for us.
Thank you. Yes, and what they call the volunteers to serve on the Works and Commissions here are very vital to the Cities of Socorro, if anybody likes to volunteer, it's always a place available, if you want to volunteer, they basically make your conditions as City Council, you'll see in the next two agenda items, that's basically their condition of quality, and so it's very important, because sometimes we don't have enough people, and we want people to be involved in our government, so this is great for you, so. But, moving on, ordinance, this is item number sixteen, introduction first reading in call for a public hearing of ordinance changing the zoning of block six and seven, block one three missions subdivision at one zero five seven zero and one zero five eight zero north loop drive from C two general commercial to N one light commercial. Planning and zoning permission recommended denied.
Do we have a motion made for motion, seconded, the planning and zoning recommendation for deny?
I mean, a motion made by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Perez, is there discussion on that?
To, to, the motion was to deny.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask the motion to deny the application?
If this is approved, recommendation, planning.
Recommendation denied.
Isn't it called for?
May separate. Well, you're denying it.
You're denying it.
Yeah, but you're, you don't even have to, you don't even have to, you don't even have to.
That is probably, what follows, mayors, to determine?
Yes, we got it, plus it for a public hearing, but that doesn't prevent you from denying the application, which is on. All right, we have a motion second to accept the planning and zoning recommendation on deny.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Item seventeen, introduction first reading in call for a public hearing of ordinance three five six, and ordinance changing the zoning of block one block three, thus the Castle Division at one zero seven four zero, may be separated from LNC dash R two, being on performing medium density residential, to R two, medium density residential. Planning and zoning permission recommended approval, do we have a motion? We have a motion made by Mr. Rodriguez to approve, do we have a second?
For a public hearing, yes.
Second. We have a motion made by Mrs. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Cox, is there discussion, Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Can you show us?
Yes, sir.
I think this wants to see.
And we have, I'm on fire here. And, alright, Jim.
This is a location of a property question. It is located at N seven forty, which is a private. No question, it is located at one hundred eighty-five eight five feet from the new section of Medusa private and Tassy Way. This property has an estimated area of ten thousand four hundred sixty-four square feet, and it is owned by Mr. Ramon Torres. The main castle division was built in nineteen eighty-five with sixty residential bars, plus a five, as a non-single family residential, after the city deactivation in nineteen eighty-six. According to official land use map, the projected end due for this property is residential. According to法律指导的red map, the法律 classification for this property is zone X. The current use of the property is residential, block two dwellings. The current use of the property is to conclude one of the existing dwellings, plus an expansion. The property owner requested a building permit to conclude two rooms that have been unfinished for only twenty years. This property has two existing dwellings classified as legal not performed. Now the owner wants to conclude what has been unfinished, plus adding a new section to the same dwelling. By doing that, by adding new square footage to the property, the only way to allow a, a building permit is, uh, getting the formal R two. Right now, they are classified as legal not performed R two, but加上the simple fact that they're gonna be adding more, more square footage, they will be losing the, the legal not performed. So, this is the, the, their request is to, is to allow the formal R two.
Mr. Leon.
Yeah.
Looking at, which you heard, it, it looks like we're having encroaching on property like that. Uh, if, that, look, if we're, if your view likes the yellow line there, it looks like the building already encroaching on the neighbor's property.
No, sir.
See the, see the, I don't know, this, this side, is that, uh-huh? See those ones? All that there, right there we have that, uh-huh? Is that, is that the same property in the neighbor's property, or what do we have there?
No, it is the same property, it's, nothing is encroaching, uh, these properties, the only thing is, uh, they, when my assistant draw this boundary limit, he made it probably from, uh, uh, you know, bigger distance of, of space, but it's, uh, there's no encroaching. No physical encroaching.
So, so, so that's not the boundary line, the yellow line is not the boundary line?
Not, it's not exactly, it's, it's only a reference.
I mean, it's like the yellow line in football, it's just, on first level, it's not really, really, that's why you're football. So, it's not.
Mr. Lamont, on the dwellings, I, if it were, if it were to make it form, it's the first form, then one of the dwellings has to be abandoned, or is it? Then, it wasn't, except there are two dwellings on the property.
Uh, one is a, one of them is this? Yeah, one is here.
Okay, so then land would be abandoned, right?
Uh, I don't understand your question.
Well, okay, it was, does R two a lot more to go on the property? Yes.
Yes, it's, 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 stuff like that, yeah.
Then how to set back?
The setback, that's a legal matter from, not, uh, yeah. If, if they, if they continue with the same situation, uh, you know, this was, uh, prior when the city was reactivated. And they had for more than twenty years, according to the information, according to the, to the, uh, of area forecaster, we have, this was unfinished from a couple of decades. They are determined to continue to finish it, but they are planning to add this section, so we start, you know, they cannot add more square footage because, uh, they will use the legal not performed. So, this is their request, uh, because they want to finish this and to have this square additional square footage. So, the, 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 the lack of setback is protected by the, by the ground cover. And also here, they don't have a, uh, the actual required setback.
Okay, I, and again, I just, just a little more dense today. Uh, then where the setbacks will, in order for them to be able to continue having those kinds of setbacks and all of those, they can't add anymore, right?
They can't.
Okay, so, to that structure?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but they're going to add to the other structure to your left.
Right.
For that square footage?
Right there. Yes, sir. Here, they're gonna add, they're gonna be adding.
Well, that's the condition right there. That's the condition.
This is the initial one.
Uh-huh.
Twenty.
And the brown one is the bad, or brown.
The land is, is the new.
That's the only kick set out of, that's the kick set out of grandfather, right? So, then, the ones to the left is not going to be grandfathered, the one to the right is going to be grandfathered.
You can, can I, can I, can I ask along the grandfather's question that you bring up? Uh, you said the last three years, sir?
Yes.
Well, they started building this nineteen ninety-four?
Nineteen ninety-four, and, uh.
You said the last one year, so it's one.
No, the subdivision was created nineteen eighty-five.
Okay, the subdivision was, yes, sir. And when they start building this, this home, and all this, we, not performing, we just have, they have.
No, they had for more than twenty years only this, uh, this section, but the brown section that is about to, where about to build it is, uh, recently, is several months. They haven't, they haven't started anything here.
And I guess that's why I'm just using the criticism. Where, where, where does the not performing legal status come in? Where do they want to add on, they, legally not, they're legally informed.
Okay, when the, the city, the property is, was built prior, when the, the city was reactivated, all the ordinances were adopted, they are protected by the legal not performing.
The law.
But, yes, sir. But if they add square footage, is one of the conditions, uh, for them to lose the protection, if this is the case. If they, for some reason, they have a destruction by fire or for any reason, more than fifty percent of the property, they are, you know, again, losing for the, then if they discontinue, uh, this, uh, the land use, especially if it's a business, again, the legal not performing would be lost. So, the only, that is why the only way to, for them to, to add this little section is getting the legal, the, the formal R two, because the, the, the not performing is, would be affected.
And then one last question, so then, so then those are two separate structures, though.
Yes, sir.
The, the brown roof structure and the, the brown square.
No, no. That's the, and it's only, this is only the preparation for future expansion.
So, then that whole, again, I, that whole piece at the bottom?
Yes.
Those two, those, that's not legal not performed?
They're not be, they're not gonna be.
They're not gonna be.
Protected, because we're not gonna be demolishing the, any structure because of the new classification, formal classification of R two.
Okay.
Oh, but that's, that's not an add-on. What I'm seeing here is not an add-on, if, if that's correct, the brown?
No, this is not an add-on.
And add-on the what? The brown roof to the brown roof? It is?
To, to this, they're gonna be extending all this.
Okay, so what, what is between the two dwellings right there, the brown roof? That white roof, and then, is that, is that a carport, or is that a, what is that, present, a, no, no, I don't get it. Back on the brown? Back on the brown?
Here.
And what is, what you're saying is an add-on. What's in between?
That, here, there are the.
What is that? Huh?
The unfinished roofs.
Oh, those are? It's okay, it's? Okay.
Let me try to see it.
Oh, that's, from angle, different angle, maybe?
Yes, sir.
So, and, they're really putting on, that's just up there, what, what about the fire, insurance, fire, oh, it's not like that? If their product is like this.
Well, if you guys, if we can approve this, and then when we have a public hearing, and the owner will be present, and they can, that's, right? Yeah, we'll wait for a public hearing, we can approve this, we'll, we'll make, and then you all can discuss it further when we have a public hearing.
Is that the introduction?
Yeah.
Okay, I agree with the public hearing, I have a lot of questions about it. What exactly, what district is this in here?
It's, um, Medusa, Wood Drive, and Tassy Way.
It's what, District seven?
That's in three.
Three, is it?
Three.
It is, yeah.
Alright, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, so we have a motion, and a second, Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez.
No, seconded by Mr. Fox.
Mr. Fox, alright, good.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Fox.
Yes, ma'am.
And, yes.
Alright, moving on to item number eighteen, discussion action to approve the records match plan.
You want to approve it?
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Perez, to approve, any discussion, Mr. Rodriguez?
Okay.
Anybody else?
Uh, I guess this is the, to be able to have a timeline to run out of all the key documents, and when they destroy it, to.
Yeah.
Uh, excuse me, do you have presentation, ma'am?
No.
Jim, did you get a chance to review the plan?
Yes, sir.
Well, I've read it, and analyzed it for, for how it's appropriate.
We have our items three eighteen, um, that we adopted, um, and that'll just case up, have to, plan to, plan. Three eighteen doesn't take, you know, having records attention, and following the, um, Texas State Library and Archivist Commission, attention.
Three, you know, three fourteen?
Three eighteen.
To the back.
That I have to do later.
It's the back of, three fourteen.
It's three eighteen, sorry. Or, yeah, three fourteen, I'm sorry.
Three fourteen. Three fourteen.
I, I guess there's some safety standards to what can be kept, or what should be kept, and period of time it should be kept, right?
Yes, and rely the, the State Commission on that.
Okay.
And it's just awful, how to conserve our documents in cases of, of, of.
Are we going to read the scan?
I'm sorry.
Are we going to read the scan?
Uh, we do, scan the, like, any of the information.
Alright, so we have a motion made by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Perez.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Aye.
And Mr. Peters. Yes, much of us.
Moving on to item number nineteen, discussion action to approve administrative assistant job description. Do you have a motion for this?
Most likely for this one.
Can you, can you put off, do, mind doing here the, here the presentation from the Blackness?
No.
No? Yeah, because she, she can't give a, she can't give us.
Well, she doesn't have it, you can improve it. Look in the back screen.
Oh, yeah.
I'll, I'll, to, to, here.
Alright, we have a motion made by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Rodriguez to approve, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez, any discussion, Mr. Rodriguez?
No, no.
Anybody? Alright, I want to see.
Look, look, back there. Back there.
What's different from the, no, this is, uh, the, the, I should have the, uh, many controlling department, and pretty much this is, we'll be at the street with this, and for the management department. Um, just assist, um, the only budget and all the technical abilities.
Alright, we have a motion second.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Fox.
Yeah.
I would say.
Item number twenty, discussion action to approve corporate job description. Do you have a?
I would approve this question.
No second?
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez, to approve, any discussion, Mr. Rodriguez?
Can you tell us? Yes, this is the new creative position of the court clerk, which is your cashier, and since the front, that's why it's at twenty-five thousand, she will be assisting other than data entry, filing, all of the clerk last year's files, and in her duties of society.
So, this is, uh, Mr. Peters?
No, this is the court clerk, the person that will sit at the front, uh, taking, you know, payments for citations.
So, can we have?
You know, we have the juvenile case manager, and he's sitting up right now.
Is that all the mail?
Oh, I, I made this contract from a, uh, agency, and so type of disability, and, like, way part of, this is going to be, uh, he'll have the opportunity to affect the decision. Well, it's, 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 it's open enough.
Okay.
I think it's a rule, we will open it up to.
Okay. Anybody else? Do you, they can see right now, right here?
I'm sorry.
Do you have, do you want to open up your thing?
Correct, once this is in, we will open up the decisions, and people can, uh, that. It's already around your back.
Alright, we have a second.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Fox. And Mr. Peters, please, much of us.
Item number twenty-one, discussion action to approve park supervisor amended job description. Do you have a motion for this?
No.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez, any discussion, Mr. Rodriguez?
Um, this is amended, we also, for, yes, the reason I'm amending the job description is we want the new work supervisor to be more on the field, not to, um, have all the, you know, in the office, to be more with the neighbors, and trying, trying to oversee. And trying to oversee, trying to oversee the department, and issue that the workers are doing, uh, so, that is what's changed, and they will be assisting our recreation supervisor to plan events, but just to assist, not to actually coordinate or, yeah.
And this is the only question that I have, um, well, it's two for a question, when do you have an opening position?
If you would. It's hard.
But I thought the plan that Renee had said was to leave it vacant, unless they actually need a position, like, but it, it stayed for a while, didn't change mine.
No. Well, actually, no, it was a motion, it was, it was discussed, but no, they, it was an optional approved motion. So, pretty much, what was approved was.
That's what I said, that's.
Yeah, I think, uh, they put it on that one, and when they combined it, they leave it, they could throw out, so they decided, oh, we will make it last. That was my question.
Well, we can always feel, uh, I mean, the motion to approve that, or not.
Okay, so we did combine, this is basically just a disposition, right? And so when we combined them, um, the plan was to go ahead and combine them, and they could position open until it was deemed necessary that we actually needed, like down the line, we said, you know, we want to go ahead and fill it, but it wasn't supposed to be filled immediately.
But it was deemed necessary.
Right.
That we deemed necessary.
No, so I was asking, I'm actually, was it going to be filled out?
Why would, why would? Because we need it just in case we need them.
Or.
Just in case we need them individual.
I mean, Doug, do you, you can just have.
Well, it certainly would make a difference whether it needs it or not.
But you can do it.
Where it lives, yeah.
But you can do that.
We have a.
Okay.
I, I can, about the, the transition. Um, when you're looking at the qualifications, I'm not, I'm not tech, circling the way of, 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 uh, administration, when you say bachelor's degree in business management, administration, what kind of administration, business administration, public administration?
It would be business administration, I can go ahead and add that.
And I would like to say that it's also public administration.
Okay.
And this is just me, because they would, they know functions of their, and everybody does that.
Okay.
So, you can.
Public and business.
So, I guess the, uh, Jim, the question would be, council, say, right now, you know, this is the, we're gonna approve with the amendment, Mr. Perez, amended, but we don't want to actually put it out for higher until state takes, with the way it's written, are we just amending the?
Sorry, I was gonna say the, two, two things, and you kind of mind posting problem, I, I think you're limited to what kind you can add, if, if, just whether or not, that's appropriate amendment, giving the posting, um, in terms of, whether or not you want to fill it, two things, if, if, if you're not comfortable posting language, if you wanted to ask them that. Two, if you did want to add that, I'm, more of the, 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 the labor's kind of issue, I don't think council typically weeds in on, we're gonna put a position that we aren't, I think hiring is, on day-to-day basis, for, on operational matter for the city, and, obviously, if we add any construction, you know, for budgetary reasons, we're, we're gonna hold certain matters vacant, I'm just saying, as a routine day-to-day matter, I don't think council makes those decisions.
Okay. Well, I would, I think that often will be, um, the small group, with, um.
Recommendation.
No, I would, a job description only.
For the recommendation, Mr. Perez.
And, and then also go to the question of the description. Uh, we're not requiring this person to have a C P L, I think, if we're looking at, uh, the, the, on the field, and, and, and the special things, and I think that'd be some, that's something we should have in case.
As a C P L. Correct, the only reason that information is not added is because you have, like, the supervisors that do not have a C D L. Who would require the time for, we hired.
Parks has no equipment.
That would be.
Uh, just.
Parks.
They wouldn't have her without it, okay. No, that's.
C D Ls require that they have your equipment, uh, tractors and motors.
So this person would not.
Not required. My recommendation would be that we don't require a C D L.
Okay, am I looking at the right hand out here? It says Recreation Parks Director.
That's, uh.
That's your, your.
Some, this is something here. I don't see the, the, the social, we need to require.
There you go. This is the one that should be posted now. And then this is the one that we have. Oh, we don't see now.
That's the one we have.
Yes.
Any questions?
Yeah.
So for real, if they have to amend a motion and then just approve it with the recommendations, Mr. Bass.
What's your recommendation? Uh, to, where it says, uh, it says the administration just generally to be specific in the business or, or public.
Okay, I'm gonna make my.
It's still an associate degree.
I'm sorry.
Still an associate or a bachelor's degree?
Okay, that's my, yes, but, uh.
I mean, it would read associates or arts of bachelor's degree in business and public management administration. Like, business administration.
Okay.
It will, it will be business and public management degree. Business or public management or administration.
Okay.
Okay, well, I have the same motion. There are some other things. So I'll go behind them. That description, I think, there was Mr. Adrian Bass.
No, second.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve with the recommendations, Mr. Bass. Any further discussion?
I don't know. I do question, Mr. Bass. I just want to make sure I'm correct on the minimum qualification, minimum qualification. I just want you to correct. Associates of arts or bachelor's degree in business management. And then you say something else?
It's business management, public management, business administration or public administration. And it would read business, public management or public administration.
But if we just stated associates or bachelor's degree, I mean, you know, I'm limited to certain, for example, uh, Jessica, she was a history major, you know? Something like that. So if you, if you graduate with a history degree and following values were for parts, we're kind of saying, well, you know what? You don't have minimum, which would not be your degree, community or bachelor's degree.
I mean, like, in social, I'm thinking that whatever training they have to be related to, to the job.
It's worth it. I mean, it's, it's for, it's a supervisor capacity, so we're getting to create reports.
History made in Twitter first. We're gonna say.
He has a bias.
Are we good?
I think Mr. Lopez will say something, Mr. Lopez.
Yes, please.
Nice and clear. No, I think that.
Correct, and this is, this is actually, I mean, if you read the, it's maintenance and homework related. So it's. Already made.
It's a forty thousand dollar here. So.
And we're actually ignoring, I believe, we used to be a forty three thousand dollar. But we're sitting at the public works, it's a forty point.
Yeah, so basically, we're adding one hundred and thirty one thousand, nine hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars for current budget. If we.
It's already.
It's already the budget.
It's good.
Yes, it's not something that we're adding, it doesn't have to be an amendment.
Yeah, all that you would see is if the, the money is, for example, with the police chief. Last year, we allocated the money. We didn't spend all the ninety thousand, there's been a police chief for left here to cancel the safety. You would see it's basically when you don't hire somebody, the police chief's safety, you don't have to have money on you.
It was bad.
Cool? Alright, we have a motion, second. Remember, this is a job description, just a job description.
And I understand, but I don't want to make it so complicated, but we can't get, uh, you can put a position.
Okay, you're too bad.
You know, I'm sorry.
Thinking about.
Yes. Yeah. So we take a poll.
We are.
Cool, cool, yeah.
Yeah.
If you both know it, or if it's a lot, I'll go against it.
Well, I just, I just don't want to make it so complicated. I would just say, you know, we can't afford, you know.
But Mr. Cox, I don't want to get so lenient there.
Alright, I hear you. Well, yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Bass, you have, you may have to go back. Yes, please.
Okay, Mr. Elliott?
All right, sir.
Mr. Cox?
Yes, ma'am.
Anderson. Mr. Cox.
Thank you. We now need Police Department to discuss an action to approve in a prime understanding between City Support Police Department and Socorro Elementary School District. And he's led us to Quinones Tribal Police Department for the purpose of monitoring and maintaining records for non-trial agency agreements.
Mr. Lopez? Second.
We have a motion to approve made by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, sir. Uh, Councilwoman, if you could postpone this, we have a long list of completely technical, non-substantial provisions. There's certain statements that go on the code, such as you're supposed to put in that level agreements. Or another thing is, and I thought I said, the, same, the, the, so possible, yes, you can postpone it.
Will you try to postpone any of the?
Yes, I know, and we have a motion in, maybe that will be postponed.
For the.
For first meeting of November.
Second.
We have a motion to postpone second by Mr. Rodriguez, and we take it out the first meeting in November, which will be sixth.
Mr. Bass?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Yes, ma'am.
Anderson. Yes.
Moving on to the planning zoning department, number twenty-three. Discussion action certificate appropriateness of proposed roof project to improve this complex. Gates enter of our purpose of road, the historical ladder commission recommends approval. You have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Bass, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Any discussion, Mr. Bass?
None.
Anybody else?
I don't think it's a very, really, I think, see the others.
Alright, we're good.
Mr. Bass?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Anderson. Yes, Mr. Cox.
Moving on to item number twenty-four. Discussion action to request a traffic analysis from Texas Department of Transportation for a possible speed reduction on the rural road from north side of the city limits to Booby Road. The historical ladder commission recommends approval.
Motion approved. Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Bass. Any discussion, Mr. Rodriguez?
No, it's seconded, another order.
Anybody else?
If it's possible, we want to let them.
Alright, we have a motion, second.
Mr. Bass?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Cox? Anderson. Yes, Mr. Cox.
Item number twenty-five. Discussion action on approval certificate of appropriateness of our academy on lot one, block one. Some doesn't assume commissions at unafforded terms for road, the historical ladder commission recommends approval.
Motion approved.
We have a motion made by Mr. Rodriguez.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Second.
What?
Mr. Rodriguez.
I heard it first.
The first?
Yeah, I heard it first. We have a second?
I do, I do.
We have a motion made by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mrs. Rodriguez. Any discussion, Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Bass?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Yes, ma'am.
Anderson. Yes, Mr. Cox.
Moving on to item twenty-six. Discussion action post Burgridge acre three, Archie, located at one, two, two, six, one, Cinamar Street with the city's support extraterritorial jurisdiction. The planning zoning commission recommends approval.
Motion approved.
You have a second? We have a motion made by Mrs. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. To approve, any discussion, Mr. Rodriguez?
I don't hear one.
The property owner requests to locate that Cinamar Street, roughly located at twelve hundred feet from the intersection of Cinamar and Burgridge Road. The property located three thousand three hundred feet from the corporate limits of the city of Socorro by the, the, the five hour extraterritorial jurisdiction. The proposed ring plan was introduced to the city of, of, of Massacre County in two thousand and nine. But it could be recorded due to the subdivision or according to the city of Socorro was exercising back then. The proposed ring plan would not create any street or access nor modification of existing utilities. According to the information provided by the owner, the property would not be developed nor prepared to be sold. It will continue to have the actual farm and rural use, but the land will be dedicated to the son. And, uh, actually, uh, I have the fact here. They were created in two thousand and nine. Apu verbally by the county. But because of the fact the city of Socorro has, uh, extraterritorial jurisdiction of this property, they could record. Now, the city of Socorro has a little bit more for the, the, the plan is to be apu. Is to be apu because it exists, exceeds the four lots, uh, to be apu administrative. So it has to be apu by council. Was presented before, but we're not commencing in the subject. Were there any conditions that need to be met? Well, actually, uh, they prepare a, uh, a landing area. And that was my question back then. Uh, what about the stuff, the, the sidewalks and, uh, and additional, you know, services? The property ownership. This is not to be developed. Yes, to refer for, for my will, uh, and leave it to my family members. And, and, and the order is here. The order is here if you want to ask any questions.
Well.
Well, this is the next one, so.
No, I understand that. But we're also looking at making sure that the conditions that are required, that we require other subdivisions, subdivisions of our developers are basically gonna be the same for them. Because we can't discriminate against one. We require a sub, uh, developer to put in sidewalks, put in park, put in all this other stuff. That's why I asked, what are the conditions that needed to be met?
Don't, don't.
Of what?
Don't be able to do this.
Had.
After the, the family.
So here. And I don't know, some plan to go down for this, but, but, but.
Uh, at least we can't have the rules, we can't comment on it, it was not available, it's not, it's not yet. So no, se va crear trabajo. Uh, you know, what you do, you do, they're, 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 they're.
And los hijos y las hijas no tienen, uh, idea, no, que van a ser estos? De cómo van a usar este.
Bueno, ellos, ellos han dejado así. Ellos tienen su proceder.
I'm the supervisor of the law. So we're having a whole different meeting. I know. We feel all the orders on a public order scheme, not an actual action. Or can we amend the suspend the rules to that?
Yeah, I was going to say it's not a posting item, it's just a.
Can we suspend the rules to allow? Or can the second administration suspend the rules to allow the order scheme?
The same rule?
Yes. Rules are suspended beyond the order scheme.
No, you can explain now, see your reasons for this project. Well, I don't know. I want to get a better idea of the process for that. For the justice of the children. We want to preserve the earth and they also want to conserve the earth.
No, I'm asking the question of the. The fact that they're doing plans for the plan for this division or the territory for the rest of the citizens. The moment that they're, they're developing. Or the intent to develop. The territory is there. Then they need to do something for that situation. If they're going to, if they're going to. And that's what I'm asking.
When the. The quarter of the Nasa. I'm going to say this. The quarter of the Nasa seventy seven. When the project is completed, farmland, this. Not obligated to do this, they need to take care of the. The Nasa, but it's specific. No, it's not like the last, last condition of a, of a resident. It's not like.
My impression, you can ask them. Okay, I'm in the impression because currently we're doing that too. But why can't, what's all that trouble if he's just gonna, just make his point? Yeah, no, it's just simple. It's just, you're just giving the land. You're not, you're not going to blame with it. I mean, all you're doing is changing owners. But it's, 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 it does carry because it carries along, you know, his, his children. You know? But what I'm saying is if he's going to do that, he's going to do something further than I understand. But I don't think we should, or I don't think it's, if he should be doing flats and stuff like that. If he's just gonna hand over the.
I think.
Yeah, but when you subdivide, you have to subdivide and it's, you're not selling it. You're giving it to your children. There is no, there's no problem with that. I mean, I had a talk to, about how you voted for it, isn't that?
Let me tell you this. The correct way to do it, to enjoy things for your family members is to make clear one of the distance in the, in the score footage. Because I don't know if that has happened in your family, but I have seen a lot of customers saying, we have problems even though they might lie to my sons, my daughters. And in order to avoid any family conflict, everything has to be properly defined.
Jim, let's take on this.
Yes, that's what I was going to listen.
None of it's in the city of San Juan. So they're focusing on it at all?
Your authority in your E P J is limited and it's not the same thing as what I say limits mine from the Doc May. I think it's permissible. And I can't think of a reason, a specific reason it's not. But when you step back, it makes me.
Could we be.
How can you subdivide and not have any improvements, but you're not paying for any improvements?
But then you look at the.
The short answer is I think it's okay if I'm not introducing conflict.
Could we, there is no rush in this, right? Because we're going to put the next thing that we can to make sure we're doing the right thing. There is no rush in this.
I'm in favor of that. Let me just. Mr. Martinez, I think that we need to bring this, bring this to our assistant that you have, Mr. What's his name?
Berk.
Berk, what's his name?
John Berk.
Yeah, John Berk. And get him to get an opinion on this because I don't think we even know if all this is for a will. We're talking about dividing his property, a will for his children. He's going to do it all that, in his will without having to work with his parents.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I don't give them legal advice or probate advice. There is an alternative, but set that aside, set the goal aside. Just in terms of is the, is the replat appropriate or not? Think it is, and try to run that side on and figure out exactly what your authority as the E P J is. So can we go ahead with the problem and make it or amend this so that we're going to put the first name in? Berk May.
The law is.
Mr. Martinez, you're asking.
I believe you can do that first. I believe we're doing this.
It's a lot of.
Go ahead now. Do we have a motion? Can you go ahead?
Okay, I have a motion to postpone it for the first week of the.
November.
No, I'm sorry.
That's a long wait.
All right, go ahead.
Second.
All right, Washington, go ahead. I'm going to use the first. May is November.
Mr. Beck.
Hi.
It's your.
Hi. Just explain the motion to me.
The motion is to postpone it to November six.
That's the motion. The other motion was wrong?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Is that, is that your? Okay, yes.
And the motion, motion.
Thank you. We got, I have number twenty seven. Describe actions to amend capital approval in the plan. Yeah, Washington.
I want to propose one.
Yes, I can say. The motion made by Mr. Rodriguez, if you all notice, the only difference that was made to the plan was adding a hundred thousand for sidewalks this year. Seven hundred. Time to put this out.
Thomas.
Who changed?
Well, the subdivision.
Good afternoon, once again. There are literally three changes to the Capitol Plan. One is to add sewer lines extended to Freo Game Road for approximately ninety-three thousand dollars. The other one is to have some painting done, potless filling in the back of the subdivision for approximately one hundred thousand dollars. That literally would come from the two thousand and twelve issuance. The third one is moving a hundred thousand dollars off of the year number five four and moving it to year number one, which gives the mayor and at large fifty dollars each to add on contribution for sidewalks.
Actual sidewalks in the back of the subdivision?
No, no, no. There's three different changes. Each one of the areas.
And really that could also facilitate your extra next door?
I've got the building provider here on that side.
Okay, because I have a concern and it's in my area of Kegel Road that, that, that vote was not completely paid. It's my understanding that Mrs. Kegels property does not have sewer or division with that kind of. No, it's an issue.
Is that for what? That's Kegel.
Yeah.
And so.
This one, I think, would be specifically for Freo. I think that's the last status that Lower Valley isn't. Again, so where's putting it up?
Because, okay, because again, if, I mean, if we're going through that, I have that concern with this resident. Then she, the payment doesn't go away and then when it rains, it gets money and it's only because she doesn't.
I mean, it's not the same as from the, but this one's because Lower Valley didn't get the money in capital. So you cover the sewer's in. So where's going to say we'll take it on so the source can get done, right?
And when they get, when they get their money, they're going to.
Okay.
That also be decided by. By their provider, which they have to say. They have no intention that they're going to do this down after.
So those under negative, so the one hundred thousand three per negative approximately for. And that's essentially what that will take away everything that's.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. And then so for this, this CEO, who would take one hundred thousand from last year's sidewalk to put it in this.
Correct.
Are you aware of this, or how do you do this?
Not a lot, or smaller, or pass.
Passing pass?
Just.
Stated here.
And. They gave it out. On the way to the limit for two plus one.
That's the, that issue with. That.
And what are we paying for, what the lower value quarter is supposed to pay?
Because the lower value quarter doesn't plan to do it until they get along. They have not secured their law to do it. And the attitude of trying to expedite the project by financing that particular project and then petitioning them to simply pay you back at some point.
Will we be that?
They have not, they have not decided to do that at all.
I mean, this is a case where another entity isn't getting the ball rolling and we're taking the power sources, the constituents and get the ball rolling officially from down.
But they did tell us, they did tell us because you were there, I was there. Mr. Biondo was there, Mr. Bogdan was there. And they did tell us the reason why is because that lot wasn't dedicated. Their funds, they did everything all around it except that street. Okay, so the funding didn't come in. So what they're doing is they're gonna, they're gonna ask for more money to cover the ninety-three thousand dollars. So when they get that, then they'll get the funding to do all of them.
Let me ask, let me ask this. What, what, did we finally get all the right away issues taken care of? Right, we still have some issues. On the cash flow front. That's not good at all. That's not even talking. We still have that issue of the. So, but once again, we wanted to look, we're going to head of the horse. We haven't got everything completed, done, done on this.
Well, not as soon because you also, if you do sewer, then we still have sewer. And if we don't do it, well, they don't have sewer, they still have road. Because we don't want to pave the road and then not have sewer. And Lower Valley considers it, guess what, we're going to put it down. And you just have to go and do the whole road that you already did. The priority, I would say, is to get in sewer. And that way, if we ever put the road and if the lady ever kicks it up, it's ready, it's good for the city.
But the thing is that, well, it's, well, and I can see it from the constant point. Well, the rights of way are not questioned. Then we're in a situation where we would be quite confident.
That's, that is part of the discussion we had a couple of meetings ago, indicating that we will not do that until the law is here.
Mm-hmm. So we just want the funds, the lots to be there already.
Okay.
So then when we move forward and they will.
So then this, this to have this kind of accessory.
Yes, and we would have already eliminated the CO2s from two thousand and twelve.
So we have to move this money, it's just sitting there anyway, right?
Yes, I just want to make sure that we can have the funds there, we can have the funds and all this stuff already set up. But I want to make sure that we don't jump the gun and start doing things in there that we don't, we still don't have any access.
And not going to. Yeah, the.
I have a problem with that. Set aside and ready for it. But we cannot, we cannot spend that money. And we cannot offer what is spending that money until we have everything lined up correctly.
Make sure that happens somehow. Mark's right.
No, I just want to, Mr. Martinez, Mr. Martinez.
And we go wait for Lower Valley.
Okay, that's not.
I need a, I need a question asked.
I, I don't have an issue with it at all. I do agree that property should be secured before we go in or we're going to be in a lot of trouble. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't decide a purchase or whether going unless you have.
And I, but I also have a question about the sidewalks, not what you're talking about. I want to know what you're talking about with sidewalks because I know Macadoo is deserving of sidewalks. So I agree with that. But we also have other taxpayers that know they're going to get sidewalks and they're going to get.
The sidewalks. It says right here. So it's eight thousand for painting of Macadoo streets.
Right, it does. If you want that, we will get sidewalks.
But it's.
That, that is.
A small sidewalks.
Not the Macadoo. I mean, not specifically, it could be for Macadoo, that is not the access. So we're not spending any money, we're just allocating forward until we have the actual road. And we.
Correct.
Okay, what's the difference with Mrs. Kegel's property? If we're going to have somebody with a sewer problem, then we're going to have to build everybody else.
Sure.
I, I think, I think Kegel Street is a little bit more complex than that. Kegel Street actually ended and then it's like a little bit of a snake type deal. And I'm not really sure if we have the right way down there to begin with. And it's a no trespassing sign right there.
Oh, okay.
You know, so that's a little bit more complex than.
And I don't know.
I just want to make sure. She said this is dead deal, it's my same, she did dedicate it to the same.
Right, right.
And I don't know how it serves the Macadoo State because one of the, the highest in worst areas in the city. They need to. My problem is with the lower value office. I don't have to be paying, for the city to be paying for whatever they need to on their own. And also because we have to be consistently repaying for that and for everybody else.
Well, I think the, I mean, I agree with Lower Valley, we had struggles with them. And I mean, you know, they, people, people can understand that they're like officials as well. You know, they see it as it's just utility, not they have their life officially to go to the people that they want or tell them what they think. You know, but I think the difference with this one is that we're not just having the money ten thousand lower value where you go and not go do it. It still has to be in their plans to do it. Like, for example, when people, if everything gets settled down, they still have to be able to go do the math or do all this. We're not just giving them the money and then saying, okay, like it has to be in their. They have a, what is that? We're doing. Five dollars? Low level service, yeah.
Okay, I know what you're saying, but to me, do you have a contract that says from the water reserve that says we're going to pay you back?
I don't know, that's a little bit in that we don't, we're not asking them to have a.
So you can ask them, but they need to reel up and I mean, right now, maybe they need to. Even if they say, oh, we're not going to pay you back. And that's my problem. I don't have to go around the water district to come and do whatever they need to. I mean, they're going to be needing.
Well, but they still need to, they're the same intuition over there. They have, they, the whole street needs to be cleared of any legal animals.
Right.
So that they can provide the facility. And then I think that before then, I don't know if it'd be good to just, if we can, then it turns into minimum random understanding and say, you know, the, the, be known to.
Actually, I want, maybe we're going to pay for something that they have to do. I want, I want something that says for them to sign here and say, we're going to pay the city to hold it back. And I want to say, I want to say eventually as you know, it will turn into forever. I want a certain thing in Simon and Mary, because I feel right for us to pay for something that they have to.
Jim, any legal issues with this?
Yeah, potentially a lot. I mean, you're not, you're not there yet, but yeah, there could be a whole, or especially.
So it's not great.
Um, it depends on how it works out. I mean, if you get there, you're going to have a number of legal issues that we get to. The first of which is, is to decide, I mean, you want to spend money or you want to do right away first.
I think we will need to. Well, we already discussed it the right away first. So I mean, that's not the issue because the issue is already, you know, we already talked about it. We already voted on it and we're just sitting on it. So we are already moving on acquiring the land. Which, which, what are you talking about?
Next, Friday.
No, Friday.
Friday, I thought you were talking about.
No.
Very.
What's up?
What are you having?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was asking, I was answering your question with respect to, if it's not, with respect to Friday. Then can't you, your question, mayor, were corrected? Yes, there are a number of legal issues. Um, I think you've got most of the constituents who have signed deeds, most of the residents who have signed deeds. I think there's one who hasn't. We need to, I think, or we don't have one who has indicated they will, but they just haven't. And then there's one who's always said they won't. We need to finish getting those, then find the suit to get, to get possession of it. And then you can decide whether you want to pay for the, for the water district to, to agree to do something or whether you just want to advance the funding and secretly first of all, wait. And that's just obviously.
Sorry, that's what the, that's what the biggest question that Mr. Cox and we have is that what are the repercussions of us saying, you know, here's the funding. It's whatever that's already available, we're not spending it until we have all the property settled in and what are normally said. But I guess that's what they're asking, what are the repercussions? Whether there are any legal issues coming, of course, if they say no, we're out, I think two thousand probably gets done. But are there any legal repercussions from this happening, any? At all?
You mean just the action, if they move in the capital, to change the capital plan?
Right. I mean, let's just say that we're going to give this money if they, if they, once we get the land, the money's set aside and once it's done, we'll give it to Lower Valley and they do it and they'll dust it up. Like, is there anything wrong with that, running from the legal? And then will you, like Mr. Beck and.
Yeah, I mean, you have to be, you have to be more elaborate than M O E. The people aren't basically a joint developer agreement.
Yeah, in the meeting with the lower value water district, North E, were they right? I mean, were they willing to agree, like contract with something he had run before first?
He has not presented it to the board. He has requested that we send material to his board and make a formal decision. So that has not been done. And this is as of a couple of years ago.
Along with this money that we're talking about spending and investing in this, why aren't we discussing eminent domain on that one last participant of, of Friday? So that we can just get the right way all together and then proceed in this way?
I understand that's what the legal representation is doing. They've got, got a great height to do this.
Then why are we going to do that? Why don't, why don't wait until that's done? And then we're looking at, looking possibly doing this after we acquired all the Friday. Move the right way. Why aren't we doing that? Mr. Martinez, I need your help on that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, you can counsel the judge to do that.
Well, no, but where, where are we as far as legal and domain?
We've got deeds, we've, there was a meeting six weeks ago, four weeks ago, issue. Um, where we presented the deals to my direction. My understanding is all two of them have returned the signed deeds. They, they said, fine, here, we can have mine. Because one, we don't have that who has said she will be, she will operate, she can do it voluntarily. We don't have that backing on the line. There's another one that has never, has always said, I'm not going to have it.
It just, it just seems to me, common sense wise, it just seems to me that we need to go ahead and acquire the right away first before we go through any other contracts that we may or may not be able to get our money back on. I think that we need to look at the aspect, the aspect of doing eminent domain on that property once and for all and get it over with. We've been doing it, we've been doing this Friday since I was the largest councilman. And I couldn't get these people to give the deeds. Renee has been more successful in giving down at least one. I gotta give credit to her. She has been successful. But this one individual is holding up the city of Socorro because we don't want to go eminent domain. Right, and let's just do it, get it over with. And then it's dealing with the lower value water district about the sewers that needs to go on that street. We've been doing this for years now. One individual is holding us up and another isn't up, in my opinion. Mr. Martinez, I really need your help on that street. I, I don't know what we can do with that one person except eminent domain. Am I wrong to assume that that's the best option now? No council already offered. Let's do it, but before we do this, before we go get into a, into a, we only know that we're going to have the contract. Uh, I, I don't agree with this. I don't agree with it because we're jumping the gun. I'm sorry. Mr. Beck is right. We need to have a contract with them. They don't, you know, they can give the contract not yet because they got it run by the board. I'm sorry.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not, we're not going to get this money control in Utah. All we're doing is, I'll leave the budget for these three projects. And if they don't happen, then the money's still there.
Yeah.
All we're just doing is amending the budget now because we're going to do the rest of the other two perhaps.
Yeah.
So the point is, all we're doing is amending the budget, moving the money so that it'll be ready. That's all we're doing.
And, and the.
And that'll give us time to do what we need to do.
Yeah, I think that's something missing is that we're just allocating the money. It doesn't mean that we're going to spend it because even if we, okay, you can allocate the money and then by that time you have the road, like a shrub, it's forever. We're not going to spend this money until the road is completed and it's actually ours and dedicated and all that stuff. That can take a couple of months. By that time, maybe Lower Valley has already gone along, maybe the product started. So this money that we set aside doesn't have to be spent anymore. So there's always possibility that because we set it aside, doesn't mean that we're going to spend it. We're just taking the caution and saying, hey, if, if you have it, you want it. And if we can have the road by the time it's ready, we'll go ahead and settle it. Here's the money, but not now, we're just setting it aside. It could happen or it could not happen.
Just, just a question.
What, what is the reason for going forward the board at this point, the lower valley?
Uh, the, the attitude is, is that they have talked about a law for maybe eight months or so. They have not formally secured that law. The attitude is, is that if they got the law, they would already go ahead and do it themselves. If they're gonna get their law, and we wanted to advance the project, then we would finance it and get a reimbursement. So they have not given the indication yet that they've gotten the law. And now, as, you still have to petition their board to say, if we finance it, will they pay it back once it is done?
And I guess that was my second question, and, and I guess it may all be more distinct now, that when we get to that point, I think that it would be wise, and I'm sure you know this, I've done business for a long time. Is having a, some kind of a, a agreement or contract ready afterward, when, if, if they do decide that they'll accept our, our assistance and funding?
Yeah, we can, we can do that, there's, there's really still two provisions there. You still have to have the road.
Right.
It doesn't matter if they have a law, they can, they can, that can happen.
They can do it, you know?
So, it's contingent upon getting the right-of-way. But then, it's, which is gonna happen first? If, if it takes us a long time to get the road, it's not coming in, whether they got a law or not, it's not coming in, whether we finance it or not, you gotta get the road.
Right.
If we got the road, and they don't have the financing, and if they're willing to pay us back, we've got it there. Or decisions can be made to do it without them. But those are the options, once the road is secured. So, you know, it's, it's really just creating a budgetary line, I enforce project at some point. And it can only happen after, after we got the street right-of-way, to decide whether or not we're gonna fast money, or pay for it ourselves, or have them to do it with their law.
So the motion should be then, to approve with the conditions as stated by Mr. Norrie?
Well, I, I don't think I can do, I can't...
No, I'm asking the motion to say with the conditions you've taken.
Yeah, I have, it can happen, but...
Yeah, I mean, that's just like, yeah.
And then also, just one last thing, isn't that the, the state mandate of, of water, of water furies to provide?
Of course, no, they're not saying they're not. But they're doing a whole section, it's a four, five million dollar...
It's about five million dollars.
Right, and I have the same color on the, on the, the great first president.
Right, right. No, no, so, I mean, that's, that's what we're gonna do. All we wanna do is, okay, just, just for the sake of saying, say you acquire the land on January first. Just to say, January first next year, we acquire the land. And Lower Valley Water District is still in the process for the law. And then they come up and say, oh, we're not gonna get the law until, you know, mid-October, right? You mean to tell me that we're gonna wait for these constituents another almost a year? Because, you know, we could come into an agreement and say, hey, okay, what if, and that's the whole thing. We had talked to them, because like I said, the four of us were there, and the sense was, okay, we will reimburse you as soon as we get this funding. Now, what, what could happen is, we can approve it, wait, and then all of a sudden, December comes along, and they already got the... And then January, we require land, so that we don't have to give them money, because they're already...
And we'll come back anyway, seek approval to be able to advance it all. But then...
Yeah, I mean, you don't have, because he'll not...
So, I mean, you know, I...
And I, I do understand the reason.
I know, I do, I understand it.
I just, I just, I wanna have something on that, right, first, where there's so many...
Yes.
We cannot, I don't think we can do this until we know for a fact that the Lower Valley Water District is gonna be able to do it that way.
I understand, all we're doing is approving the budget.
That's all we're doing, we're not spending it.
We don't have to put the budget until we know for a fact what they've got offers. Bottom line, we don't have to do this.
You would have to, because part of you do the logistics, and there's... We're not spending on anything at this point, and we have a project structure, honestly. So, I mean, like, everything you already allocated for, it's already, you're basically taking what's left of the twenty-four CO two, one hundred ninety-three thousand, saying, Maga do, here's a hundred thousand. But Frye Oeen, in case you have it, here's ninety-three thousand, that's all you're doing, you're not spending it, you're just allocating. Like I said, if it doesn't happen, the money goes back to the banks that gave it to them.
I wish you this. Which it is.
It happens or doesn't.
Wish you all that success.
All right, I was so much in that, I didn't talk so much.
I would like to amend my motion and say, my motion would be to approve this, I would like it, but it's not... But also, um, I would like something right in the sense, the Lower Valley Water District will pay us back. Everything. And again, not eventually, because that could extend to forever. Right after they get the funding for these areas. Yes, and, and sign it and everything, I mean, everything will. Because again, my office, I want to pay for something that the Lower Valley Water District should be responsible for. And I'll get a manicab, because we don't need a manicab. And if they don't wanna need a manicab, then no.
All right, we have a second motion, and a second made by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Rodriguez, to amend the motion to approve with the recognition Mr. Norrie made. Any questions, Mr. Rodriguez, okay, Mr. Cox, go ahead.
I just, I would like that, that we amend the motion also, address the fact that we won't move any of the Frye Oeen until we have, I have acquired that this property. Bottom line, bottom line, I want to understand.
All right, we have a motion, second to approve.
Hi.
Hi.
Wait, so can I have anything signed with the...
All right, number twenty eight, discretion action void for corporate evaluation proceeding matters. Jim, on this one, can we do it here, or do it inside there?
Uh, you can do it. You can, you should do it.
All right, so we will do it. Yes. I want to be called as you do it. My name is, I'll take that one. All right, we have a motion, made by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Rodriguez, to number twenty eight, to executive.
Hi.
Hi. We want to execute it?
Yes.
You have a motion?
Yes.
The second? The motion made by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Perez, to come to executive session.
Hi.
Hi. Let's leave it.
You can turn that air conditioner down, or something, so it's not... Jesus. Did we get a key or a screwdriver for funding? I'm gonna start wearing my tacks.